Good morning.
Good morning.
Come on in and get a seat. We are ready to begin. I'm Robert E. Jones. I'm the director of the center here, and I want to welcome all of you here. It's delightful to have people working together for justice, righteousness, and the common good. And we're so thankful that you're here this morning. So on behalf of the president of United Theological Seminary, Reverend Dr. Wendy Dykman, I want to welcome you to this place. As most of you know, this is a new place of gathering that we hope to be able to become a place in which people like all of you who are here today will gather to make a difference in the needs of people in this community. And so we're thankful. This is our first major event since we got started in this past year, and it's starting off great by your being here. So give yourself a hand. We're so glad you're here to get us started on our way on this journey. So we're so thankful. Thank you. Let me give you some other things about where things are in the building, but before I do, it's a special pleasure for me too because I have not had an opportunity since my formative years to be with Congressman Conyers. Congressman Conyers and I were together back at Yale in New Haven fighting for the Humphrey-Hawkins Bill when it was first beginning to be initiated. And I'm so thankful. And you know, when you're in school, you're trying to find yourself. What are you going to be about? He was inspirational to me in terms of charting the path. And those of you who are here know that I'm involved in social action. Part of it is because of his responsibility when I was a student back in Yale. So I'm so thankful to be here to represent him today. With that, again, thank you for being here, and I know that this is the beginning of a great effort, and we're going to provide jobs for people who need. Amen. Somebody coming after me. Brother Jeff Mims, our educator. Our educator. Let's give our educator a hand as he comes with you.
Thank you, Reverend Jones. You know what? That's one of those many, many hats that I've been blessed to be able to wear as a former teacher and coach and president of Teachers Union and OEA and the whole deal. But it's been a true blessing because we all know that we raise our children to take our places, and the better we prepare them, the better we make the world. You can't make anything happen without education. As we take this opportunity to welcome Representative John Conyers, before I do anything, I'd like for you to take a good, strong look at that beautiful jacket that he's wearing and notice the insignia that's over his heart. Capafasai fraternity, the fundamental purpose of Capafasai is achievement in every field of human endeavor. He may not remember me from some 30 years ago when I first became a lobbyist for the Ohio Education Association and went to a Congressional Black Caucus meeting in Washington, D.C., and I had the pleasure of meeting him then and listening to the goals and aspirations that they had for all people, including African-Americans. And it was one of those kinds of things with those who have known me for several decades in this community that I've tried to pattern my life after trying to make good things happen for people, especially little people. You know, that's a passion of mine. So I'm going to take this opportunity right now on behalf of our mayor, Nan Whaley, hereby sends this official greeting and congratulations to Representative John Conyers in recognition for helping host the 2015-2016 Jobs for All National Tour. Thank you for this great opportunity for our community. Your ideas on job creation, health care, and raising the national minimum wage will continue to elevate the jobs issue to a national prominence. Adopted by the Dayton City Commission December 5, 2015, signed by Mayor Nan Whaley, Mayor Dean Lovelace, Joey Williams, Matt Joseph, and myself, Jeffrey Mims. Now, we had another one here that's a little bit more detail. I'm going to try to do this very quickly because we'd be here all night if we talked about all of your accomplishments. We certainly deserve that if we chose to stay. But just wanted to mention that you are from Michigan, representing in the 13th Congressional District, and that you were the first African-American dean of the House of Representatives and served in Congress since 1965. This is you I graduated from high school. Also, founding member of the Congressional Black Caucus, as we mentioned before. Additionally, introduced the first bill in Congress to make Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday a national holiday in 1968. Additionally, you have worked to introduce a commission to study the reparation proposals for African-Americans Act, this House Resolution 40, that calls for a commission to research the history of slavery and its effect on people across the nation. Also, Representative Conyers proposed House Resolution 288, which condemns religion's intolerance, which we also know is very, very important, especially as we look at the kinds of things that are happening with our brothers across the nation. Representative Conyers also has made principled stands against government intrusion into the lives of our citizens across the nation. And now, therefore, I, Nan Whaley, mayor, city of Dayton, and the Dayton City Commissioners, do hereby proclaim December 5, 2015 as John Conyers' Day. Thank you again, sir.
What a pleasure it is to be with you and with the distinguished men that are here on the dais. I am deeply indebted to Mayor Nan Whaley for this proclamation, which incredibly gives me the honor and distinction of having a day named in my honor. Therefore, I, Nan Whaley, mayor of the city of Dayton, do hereby proclaim December 5, 2015 as John Conyers' Day in Dayton. Mayor, I thank you and citizens and supporters for this honor. I will carry it with me. I'm going to frame it, and then I'm going to have it put into the Congressional Record and remember this for the rest of my career. And this has been a great visit for me to Ohio, and I want to begin by reciprocating some of the generosity and kindness and friendship that I've experienced here. And therefore, on next Saturday, December 12, in Detroit, I am inviting you all to join me at our Christmas celebration at 6:00 p.m. Eastern Standard Time to join us and all of our friends. There will be others from Ohio that will be there, and I would invite all of you to be my guests. We have the information available on our website, and my trusted assistant is here to give you further details about it. Dayton, Detroit, they're not that far apart. We have very common issues, and so I'm pleased to be here with you to thank all the dedicated leaders and organizers who made this possible for me. I want to thank Phil Harvey and Logan Martinez for the great work they've done. Let's give them a hand, too. For those of you who know me, you know that the one single top domestic priority is for this, the wealthiest nation in the history of the world, that the United States become a full employment sponsor of jobs for everybody in the country, and that should be our number one domestic goal. That seems simple and obvious, and what we will be doing is building up support for it and understanding for it everywhere I go in the United States. We want this country to officially go on record, and I'm working on some things to get back to the outgoing Number 44, the President of the United States, to help lead and continue this legacy of the simple economic goal of jobs for everybody in America. And also with it, a trust fund for training people for jobs who may not have the skills for a job if it were presented to them. It's sad to say that our education system has disappointed so many people by leaving them unprepared for the great responsibilities of keeping a job because that's what everything is based on. And so while Barack Obama, our president, has presided over job creation and has done a lot and gone a long way to ensure that all Americans have experienced economic recovery, we have this consideration. In addition to the millions of Americans that are unemployed, three and a half million former workers are jobless or have, worst of all, given up searching for a job. And as a result, they're not even included in the unemployment rate because if you're not looking for a job, you're not counted as unemployed. And I think you know what that does to a family, where there are obligations, their children, their elder people that need special assistance, and that furthermore, there are more than 6 million Americans who are forced to work part-time because they can't find a full-time job. 6 million Americans, and that's higher than at any time since the early 1990s. And so we still need over 3 million jobs to get back to reach the so-called pre-recession 2008 levels. In many urban and rural pockets of our country, including parts of my district in Detroit, the unemployment rate is still hovering at around 24% to 26% unemployment. And I don't need to remind you that people of color suffer far worse unemployment because our rate of unemployment is 9.4%, nearly double the average unemployment rate. And in Ohio, African-American unemployment is 3.3 times higher than it is for whites. And so for this reason, brothers and sisters, I've introduced a number of bills that will help return America to full employment. My key measure, and I have 39 cosponsors, my signature bill is H.R. 1000. And I was with your dynamic member of Congress, Joyce Beatty, Congresswoman Beatty, last night, and we had a wonderful event and a great discussion about this subject. What we do in the Humphrey-Hawkins 21st Century Full Employment and Training Act. Why did I name it after Humphrey and Hawkins? Well, everybody knows Hubert Humphrey and his great work, but maybe everybody doesn't know that Hawkins, Gus Hawkins, was the one that created the Full Employment Bill, and he went to then-Senator Humphrey, and he joined with him. And so I'm carrying on this great noble effort to what I consider the most important domestic piece of legislation, to create work opportunities and training programs in areas including construction, infrastructure repair, energy efficiency, education, health care, and neighborhood renovation. The bill is fully funded by a very tiny tax on speculative transactions by Wall Street Hedge Funds and traders and will not add any cost to the federal debt whatsoever. Despite causing our economic crisis, we gave Wall Street a bailout, and the American people, the workers, never got a bailout. Billions of dollars went in to keep the people that created the bubble that finally burst. We helped, and now it's our turn and obligation to help working people and their families all across this country. So we must continue to build support for H.R. 1000 so that the richest, most powerful country in the history of governments all around the world can guarantee the right to a job or to training for a job. And so in addition to that, we want to create in the Federal Reserve a new way to create and facilitate job creation because the Federal Reserve Board says that, look, if we support creating jobs, we'll create inflation, Congressman. Don't you understand? We've got to keep inflation down, and to do that, we don't want to say much about jobs. We want to talk about the interest rate that goes to all of the people that get all the money. And so I share the view of progressive economists, Joseph Stiglitz, for example, who say that slowing the economy to stop millions of Americans from getting jobs and pay raises would be a serious error. And what's wrong with a $15 an hour minimum wage? That's a very reasonable proposal, and we're pushing that with every bit of energy and commitment that we can bring, and the cause is growing. And what a Federal Reserve Board is trying to do with Mrs. Yellen is to raise the interest rates, and we consider that something that would slow the economy and hurt job creation and wage growth. And so I've got a bill to deal with that. And then I joined with my colleague, Senator Bernie Saunders, who's championed a new bill to deal with young people. It's called the Employ Young Americans Act. Nearly 6 million youngsters are neither in school or working. Only 1 in 5 African-Americans between the ages of 16 and 19 are employed. 1 in 5. This is a national emergency that demands immediate federal action, and so I'm introducing the bill in the House. It provides for immediate funding to states and localities to employ young Americans between the ages of 16 and 24 and provide job training to hundreds of thousands of young people. In the words of the greatest man I've ever known, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "If a man doesn't have a job or an income, he has neither life nor liberty nor the possibility for the pursuit of happiness." He merely exists. And so, my friends, let's build a full employment society so that people all across this land can truly thrive. And full employment. And when I go back to Washington, I am going to tell people of what's happened to me in Ohio, in Dayton, and other places with your great Congresswoman Beatty. We're going to continue to move this forward, and there will be other places that we will be going after the holidays, and we want you to know about it, and we want to come back to Dayton. This isn't just popping in and keeping going somewhere else. It's bringing everybody together for the most important domestic issue in Washington, D.C., in the Congress, a job for everybody in America. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Debbie Silverstein. I am the state director of Single Payer Action Network of Ohio, and we are big, big fans of Congressman Conyers because of his sponsorship for years of H.R. 676, the Expanded and Improved Medicare for All Act. And you know, something that goes hands in hands, you know, job is fundamental, but your health is too. We believe health care is a human right, and we believe in the human right to health, which also includes adequate nutrition, adequate housing, a clean and safe environment. It also has to include a job at living wages. And you know, here in Ohio, the top 10 jobs in the most demand for workers, only one of them provides the living wage. That's our problem here in Ohio. We have some speakers from the Dayton area that are going to expand on what Congressman Conyers has talked about for jobs and also going to talk to you about the health care issue. And we have with us this morning Charles Morton from the Executive Secretary of the Dayton Miami AFL-CIO. We have Dr. Philip Harvey, who is a professor of law and economics at Rutgers University and one of the people who has advised Representative Conyers on this design and drafting of H.R. 1000. And he'll be talking about the main features of H.R. 1000 and what it's designed to achieve. We also have Dr. Morris Brown, a family physician and a very, a community activist and very, very strong single payer advocate that is going to explain the health care part of this. You know, remember, jobs and health go hand in hand. One of the things I tell people is health follows wealth. We know that. We can determine longevity by zip code. But medicine follows money, and when everyone has access to health care, then medicine moves out in order to provide for those people so those underserved areas get provided for more. So we'll start right now with Charles Morton.
Thank you very much, and I'll be fairly brief. I want to start off by thanking the National Jobs for All Coalition for getting this important program scheduled, and Logan and his organization for spearheading here in Dayton. And I want to thank Reverend Jones for his hospitality here, and of course, the Congressman. I mean, this man, he's been one of the working people's biggest allies in Washington, D.C., and we have to recognize that, and we have to support him. Thank you. The Dayton Miami Valley AFL-CIO is concerned about the loss of jobs, of course, and the underemployment, which is not spoke about very often. By saying underemployment, I mean folks that are out there working a full-time job, they're not making enough money to support their family, you know, and that has a great disastrous effect on a family. And so we work hard to try to increase people's wages in their jobs and help them any way we can. But you know, in this country, we've had over 51,000 manufacturing companies move overseas. And you know, I know you listen to certain TV shows or radio stations. It's all about the unions did this. The unions run the workers out of this country. Oh, they make too much money. Now, you know, right now at this point, I think there's like a 15% difference in the wages in China workers and American workers. So it's a lot of other factors that makes a company move overseas, being no regulations on the environmental protections, no labor laws, no safety laws, so many other options or reasons that cause companies to move overseas. And so we need to fight that. Those 51,000 manufacturing jobs that we lost equal to over 2.7 million jobs, and about almost a million and a half of those was in the electronics industry. And we all go out and buy our TVs and our phones and everything, which we can't do without. I understand. I'm guilty as everybody else. But we have to do something as consumers in this country to change that. You know, we have companies that had made a product in this country for years, hundreds of years, paid decent wages. Now they make that same product overseas paying a fraction of what they used to pay the workers. Then they export it back to our country, and we still pay high dollar for it. I mean, perfect example, Nike shoes. We all love Nike shoes. We all love Nike shoes. You know, we'll spend $100, $150 for a pair of Nike shoes, while that kid over there is making $2 a day to make them. I mean, where's that, where's the justice in that? And the only way we're going to stop this is if the consumer in this country and the workers in this country stand up and quit buying all this stuff. I know there's things we cannot do without. You know, I understand, and it's hard to go shopping out there and try to find everything made in the USA anymore. It's almost impossible. But, but that's, if we just start a program like that, we'll make a difference. And so, you know, unemployment, we can look at the news, and just like the Congressman said, it looks rosy, unemployment down to 5 point something percent. But the real unemployment's still up around 20% because, like the Congressman said, there's people that quit looking. And so they're not counted on the unemployment rolls, or they're making, making such a small amount of money that they're working, but they can't support their family. And that's not, that's not good for families, and that's one of the reasons we're having a problem with families staying together. I mean, a job, job creation would solve so many problems in this country. People want to work. I don't care who you are, you know, or anything, you want to work. People, it makes a person feel good, it gives them worth, and helps them support their families. And that's what we have to do as a country, get that back together. We need to make sure that our leaders in Washington quit doing these crazy trade deals that pits our company or our workers having to compete with people making 50 cents a day or 50 cents an hour. That's, I mean, that's impossible, and we can't compete with that. And so it's our, our hope, that our leaders in D.C. and with our pressure and with the AFL-CIO's help and their pressure, we're going to make a difference. And especially when we have elected officials like Congressman Conyers, we will make a difference. But it's going to take everybody working together. And so, but I wanted to make a commitment to the Congressman at the Dayton Miami Valley AFL-CIO. And I know that the AFL-CIO is around the state. We commit to supporting him and his good work up in Washington, D.C. So, thank you. And so, anyway, that's my remarks, and I want to thank everybody for coming out here on this foggy morning. But it's important, and we all have to really stop and take stock of our world or our country. And if we want to make a difference, we got to make it, we got to do it. We can't just think about and talk about, we have to do it. So think about the next time you go to certain store chains or something and save that 25 cents on that pair of socks or that 50 cents on some item that you can get somewhere else that are made in America for maybe 50 cents more, you know? But we're, and we're all guilty of that. So I'm not throwing stones or anything. You know, that's how American people are. We want the cheapest thing we can get. And no matter, then we say, well, where's the jobs? Well, we're getting the cheapest stuff, so why, you know? So we have to, we have to take that into consideration. We have to change our way of thinking in this country, so. But thank you. I wanted to make a few comments there, and I think this is a good, important program this morning, and we need to have more of these. And look forward to working with Reverend Joe, or Robert Jones over here at the center, and maybe the Council can do some things over here with you. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. And next we have Dr. Philip Harvey from Rutgers University.
My role this morning is to explain H.R. 1000, the signature job creation bill that Representative Conyers has introduced in Congress. Now, the single most important thing you need to understand in order to understand why H.R. 1000 is structured the way it is, is that it's predicated on the assumption that access to a decent job is a human right. And I'm going to say that again because it's very, very important, if this movement is going to succeed, that people begin to think of this as a human rights struggle. We need to secure the right to a decent job along with the right to health care, education, and adequate income support for people who can't support themselves. It's a full panoply of human rights, and it's our task to make sure that the United States secures them. Like other human rights, government has a duty to secure the right to work, the right to a decent job. And H.R. 1000 is designed to do that. It is designed to secure the right to a decent job in the United States. Now, how would it do that? Here, the story gets a little complicated, but not too complicated, because the job creation strategy that H.R. 1000 would deploy is not the strategy that most people associate with progressive job creation initiatives. The conventional strategy that progressives have supported for the last 70 years and relied upon is one that uses government stimulus spending to promote job creation in the private sector. The strategy that H.R. 1000 relies upon is a slightly older progressive American strategy, the one developed by New Deal progressives and tested in programs like the Civilian Conservation Corps and the Works Progress Administration. The singular characteristic of this strategy is that it relies on direct job creation to combat unemployment rather than simply the stimulus of private sector job creation. Now, why prefer the New Deal strategy over the conventional strategy? Well, there are six reasons. The first is that it creates 2 to 4 times as many jobs per dollar of stimulus spending. In fact, if Congress had decided to spend the $800 billion that back in 2009 were voted on a conventional stimulus program that was predicted to and did in fact create or save 3 to 4 million jobs, if that amount of money had been devoted to an H.R. 1000-style job creation effort, it would have reduced the unemployment rate in the United States to 2% for two full years. And two years later, Congress enacted, this didn't get as much publicity, but it was a second effort that cost 800, about $800 billion, though that was entirely in the form of tax cuts. It was after the election in 210, and that's the only kind of stimulus that the Republicans would support. But if that $800 billion had been devoted to direct job creation, it would have kept us at that 2% level of unemployment for another two, actually more years, because at that point, the economy would have begun to recover, and there wouldn't have been a need for as much job creation. So, the first point, H.R. 1000 has adopted a strategy that creates more jobs. Secondly, it creates those jobs more quickly. The job creation is front-loaded rather than back-loaded. You don't wait for the economy to recover to give people jobs. You give people jobs as a way to make the economy recover. Third, it distributes the jobs more failing, because when you have a stimulus, most of the jobs get created wherever you decide to spend the stimulus. And the problem with that is that that's a very scattered and uneven distribution of the stimulus dollars, whereas H.R. 1000 spends the dollars where the unemployed people are, which means in every community in the country where there are unemployed people, that's where the money gets spent in proportion to the amount of unemployment that exists in those communities. Fifth, it's a strategy, oh, fourth, no, that was just three. Fourth, it provides better protection against unemployment during a recession. In fact, one of the things you need to understand about recessions is that it's not really necessary for people to suffer unemployment during a recession, any more than it is necessary for people to go hungry during a recession. We don't let them go hungry. Well, people need food. We do what's necessary to provide them with food until the economy recovers so they can provide it for themselves. Same thing with jobs. Yes, the economy is going to experience recessions, but we can provide jobs for people so that they have something to live on equivalent to what they had before the recession started until the economy recovers. This was really the point of departure for the New Deal strategy. It wasn't really intended so much to get the economy out of the Great Depression, it was designed to help people survive the Great Depression. And that's one of the functions that H.R. 1000 would perform. Sixth, or fifth, it's a strategy that can be implemented at the local level as well at the national level, and this is very important for the eventual success of this strategy. We know that H.R. 1000 is not going to be passed in this Congress, but there are places in the country where progressives have enough political power that they may be able to implement the strategy on the local level. And by building experience with and demonstrated success in the use of this strategy to combat unemployment, we think that the road to eventually passage of the bill in Congress would be paved. And sixth, and finally, and this in my view is actually the most important of the advantages of the H.R. 1000 strategy, and that is that it is in fact capable of achieving genuine full employment, which is not something that the conventional strategy is able to achieve. Indeed, economists have a special term that they use to describe the lowest rate of unemployment that it's possible to achieve using a strategy of job creation that relies entirely on economic growth, which is the conventional strategy that we are accustomed to. And they refer to that as the NIRU. It's an acronym for a term that you'd never remember, and I'm not going to inflict upon you. But the consensus among progressive economists today is that the NIRU is about 4%. That's the lowest level of unemployment we can actually shoot for with conventional policies. Now, the problem with 4% unemployment is that it isn't even close to full employment. The last time the United States had that level of unemployment was 15 years ago in December 2000, when the unemployment rate was actually below 4%. It was 3.9%. The economy was booming, and there were 4.9 million job openings in the country. And that sounds pretty good until you compare it to the 5.6 million unemployed workers who were looking for jobs that month, the additional 3.2 million involuntary part-time workers, people who had part-time jobs but wanted full-time jobs, and the 4.2 million people who wanted a job but were not counted as unemployed because they weren't looking in the ways that are required for you to obtain that designation in government statistics. And so at a time when employers were trying to fill 4.9 million jobs, we had 13.1 million people who needed and wanted jobs. Now imagine a game of musical chairs. There are 13 players in the game, but only five chairs. What do we need to do in order to make sure that everybody has a chair? It's simple. We've got to get eight more chairs. And the same is true of the labor market. Back in 2000, even though the unemployment rate was 3.9%, even though we could not use economic growth to drive it further down without causing inflation, that didn't mean we had to be satisfied with that gap in employment, with that job shortage. And the singular characteristic of H.R. 1000 is it's designed to get us past that point. Now, how many jobs would H.R. 1000 create? Well, actually, 1/3 of the money collected under H.R. 1000 would be devoted to job training, 2/3 would be devoted to job creation. The job training, though, would be job training in which the trainees received stipends, so it's paid job training. The amount of money that would be available for it is 10 times as much as we currently have available for job training. And perhaps most important of all, if you talk to people who run job training programs, we could guarantee a job for every successful graduate using the skills they obtained in the training program. Because that's where the other 2/3 of the H.R. 1000 money comes in, in creating the jobs necessary to make sure that the opportunities that we need to give people, not just the motive, but the experience of success going through a job creation, a job training program, to then move into a job using what they've been trained to do. Now, would H.R. 1000 create enough jobs to actually close the economy's job gap entirely? And the answer to that is not immediately. It would create about 6 million jobs and training slots, and whenever the economy's level of unemployment was above the NIRU level, that 4% inflation barrier, it would create another 2 million jobs through its stimulus effect, but that still only totals 8 million. And I just told you, well, actually I didn't, but today, the job gap that's equivalent to the 8.1 million job gap that I said existed in 2000, today the job gap is larger, it's 13.9 million. So, H.R. 1000 would immediately create 8 million jobs, but we need 13.9. However, it is designed in a way that over time it would actually achieve genuine full employment, it would actually provide jobs for all those job wanters in the economy. Now, the reason that H.R. 1000 over time would have that effect of reducing the number of jobs we had to create in order to achieve full employment is something else that I'm not going to try to explain to you today because there's not time, and quite frankly, the explanation might bore you also. So, you're just going to, well, don't take my word for it. If you're interested, please talk to me about it, because I like nothing better than to explain the economics of H.R. 1000. But it is designed to get us to genuine full employment. I think that my best guess would be that it would probably take a decade or so for us to get there, but once we got there, it would keep us at genuine full employment, jobs for all, no job gap at all. It would keep us there, and it would keep us there notwithstanding the fact that the economy would still experience recessions, since as I said, we would go through recessions when the economy dipped, but we wouldn't have the unemployment because H.R. 1000 would step in to provide the jobs that the recession destroyed until the economy fully recovered. But even when it fully recovers, we still need it to create all those jobs beyond 4% unemployment needed to get us down to genuine full employment, which is probably 1 to 2%. Okay? Now, where would the money come from? I'm not going to address that because Representative Conyers has already described roughly the tax that would generate the funds. As I've indicated, 1/3 of that money would go for job training, 2/3 of it would go for job creation. What would, who would create the jobs? Well, the jobs would be created essentially by you all, because the design of H.R. 1000 is to use the money to provide funding for not-for-profit organizations, educational institutions, Indian tribes, state and local governments, other public sector agencies that develop project plans and submit those plans for approval to the Department of Labor, which would be the distributor of the funds. They would then get the funds to actually create the jobs. So, if you are in an organization that prioritizes housing, you know, create a project to build houses. If it prioritizes green energy, create a project to put solar panels on everybody's house, free. If your priority is education, create a project to give every teacher, one or two teachers aides, if it would help, and fulfill the other unfilled positions in schools. Whatever the focus of your particular interests are, H.R. 1000 is a route to achieve your goals. Now, what would the requirements be for these job creation programs? First, they would have to serve public needs and be planned in collaboration with local stakeholders. So there is a limit on the kinds of things you get funded, but the only limit is that it serves public needs, and that's a very, very broad requirement. Secondly, the displacement or replacement of existing workers would be strictly prohibited. Third, everyone hired would have to be either unemployed or employed part-time involuntarily. But, and there would be no income test. So if you were an unemployed stockbroker, you also would have access to a job. But 35% of the jobs would be reserved for people who qualify as disadvantaged until all of the disadvantaged workers were employed, and then that requirement would be relaxed. So it's designed for all workers to guarantee everyone's right to work, but it is designed in a way that makes sure that disadvantaged workers will be first in line to obtain the employment opportunities. Fourth, the jobs would have to last at least a year, but when one project ended, the project's workers would be eligible for employment on other H.R. 1000 projects. In other words, there would be no time limit. If you were unemployed for five years, 10 years, 20 years, you're still going to be guaranteed access to a job. Fifth, job applicants Fifth, job applicants would have to be offered either full or part-time employment, depending on their desires. So it's a program for people who want full-time employment, also a program for people who want part-time employment. Sixth, the jobs would have to pay the same wages that regular public sector employees receive for doing comparable work. And if you think about what the effect of that would be, it would turn the public sector wage scale into the minimum wage scale for the entire economy and turn all of the efforts that have been already made in adopting local or regional living wage ordinances that apply to the public sector, would make those ordinances apply by operation of market forces on all workers in the economy. Seventh, the jobs would, could be created in unionized workplaces, but only with the consent of the union and with the terms and conditions of employment of program workers negotiated with the union. In other words, they would join the unionized bargaining unit. Eighth, all program employees would have the same legal rights as non-program employees, including the right to unionize if they're not already in a unionized workplace. And ninth, all program employees, and this is an important feature to help control the inflation problem, would be required to maintain their registration with their state employment service as available for work if and when a comparable job, one that paid the same and was as good in other respects, same general kind of work, became available for them in the private sector or in the regular government sector. So there would be an ongoing effort to connect people who were employed in the program with employment opportunities outside the program. And that also means that employers would have to, in effect, come to the program to get their workers. They wouldn't simply be able to put up a sign at the door and say, "Help wanted," and lo and behold, find a line of 75 people outside the door. "They want workers. We've got workers for you, but they're employed. You've got to come, and you've got to offer them jobs as good as the ones they've got in order to get them." Okay? So it would change the dynamics of the way labor markets work in a fundamental way and in a way that's fundamentally favorable for workers, so that it's designed not only to create jobs for everyone who wants one, but also to make sure that all of those jobs are decent jobs, because that too is a part of the right to work. And with that, I think I've actually gone over my time, so thank you, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Harvey. Poverty is an indicator of health that is just as strong, we're finding, as your cholesterol levels, your blood pressure, whether or not you smoke. Primary care doctors are increasingly being asked to screen their patients for signs of poverty, inadequate nutrition, inadequate housing, and the issues that can affect their health. And so it is greatly, health is greatly, greatly attached to the jobs and jobs at living wages, and the two go, really do go hand in hand, and which is why we're showcasing both of them together. But before we do that, Eric Spurling, where are you? Congressman wanted to acknowledge you. Eric is the congressman's aide and right-hand man and responsible for making sure everything goes smoothly on his visit today, and also a wonderful advocate for you and me. So let's welcome Eric and thank him for the job he's doing. He tries to steer the congressman in the right way. No, on the issue. Okay. Dr. Morris Brown is going to talk to you about his firsthand experiences too in dealing with patients that don't have adequate health coverage, that don't have the needs, their basic daily needs met, and the issues that attack their health, and why we need HR 676. You know, the first time I met you, Congressman, was in Kent, Ohio. You came to the Barack Obama campaign headquarters in 2008. And so many people found out you were there and came to see you. It all spilled out into the streets. And so we were out there in Main Street in Kent, Ohio, and the California Nurses Association happened to be in town with their big bus that came by, and it turned into a rally for 676. And the fight, the cheer was, "Healthcare, healthcare, we need a fix. We need HR 676." We needed it then, we need it now.
A lot of energy in this room, and boy, I see you guys are on the edge of your seats. And I'm not sure why I came last. You usually say the best for last, but I think they flipped it this time. So I'll tell you, I've got some big shoes to fill to try and keep you guys on your seats. I don't see anybody sleep. I don't see anybody yawning. I don't even see anybody on their texting. And this is odd, to be in an audience and people texting and emailing and doing all those things you can do on the side while you try and not hear the speaker. So I applaud the previous speakers for doing a fantastic job, but you really raised the bar for me, and hopefully, I won't put you guys asleep. But thanks to the National Jobs Coalition, and thanks to Moderator Silverstone for the insight, and for Dr. Jones, my friend and colleague, as we've struggled to right the ship here in Dayton, Ohio. And thanks to, most of all, again, I know you've been called this before, but you are a mentor for me, even though I'm in healthcare. And that's Congressman Conyers. I used to go to Detroit back in the 60s. Now, I'm going to tell you how old I am. I'd go back and forth every break between Knoxville College and Detroit, and I would get a job. And I would have two jobs. My friend Larry Dunn and I, we couldn't wait till we got out of school to rush to Detroit to get jobs. And there were plenty of jobs, and we would have jobs, and would make money, and come back and pay for school. And to be truthful, things weren't that bad in the 60s. We had jobs, and those jobs were even there for the less of labor force. We could provide that labor force, and that's not there now. So with all that you heard from a doctor, from the professor, Dr. Harvey, you guys definitely got a good backdrop about this issue of jobs. So let's start where he left off, because without a job, you're not going to have healthcare, or it's going to be marginal. And that was before Obamacare. If you go back to 50 years ago, even, they talked about the New Deal. We can look at what was happening with the New Deal as it relates to healthcare. Not only were jobs on the table, but also the issue then was healthcare costs. The healthcare budget was based, costs were astronomical. They identified it as a potential major cost issue, meaning we could not afford to have people keep going in the emergency rooms. We could not have people showing up with cancers in later stages. And Roosevelt, at that time, designed a bill quite similar to the bill that Representative, Congressman Conyers proposed, which is Hospital 676. He proposed at that time universal health. So this conversation on universal health, single payer, started 50 years ago. Now, I'm a bit, let me keep you up to what happened, though, as you could hear from the history of the jobs promotion from both speakers. The job issue, even though it's not where it should be, it did improve. Things improved, and things moved forward, and we've had some highs and lows as it relates to jobs. But some of the very things that the New Deal put in then is why we are doing so good with jobs. But you know what died on the vine? Universal health. Universal health got no traction. Universal health got no attention. In fact, he was called a socialist because he proposed universal health. So that, my people, is the problem. Our policymakers have identified the problem, but we can't move that button at all toward universal health until Obamacare came along. We'll get back to Obamacare later, because now, of course, it's been appealed, and we want to go back as business as usual. And business as usual may not be all that good. So how good is our healthcare? Really, how good are we? We're the nation, we're the world leader in healthcare, right? Everybody agree? We've got the best healthcare system in America, in America, right? In America, yes. In the world, best healthcare system in the world. Nobody agrees. You guys are very knowledgeable. Well, let me tell you about a study that was just put out by the World Health Organization, where they looked at the top 10 industrialized countries in the world: Sweden, France, Germany, United Kingdom, Israel. There were a total of 10, and the US was also in that group. And they compared the healthcare cost and the healthcare outcomes of the US against these 10. And guess who came in dead last? The US came in dead last. So what we think is the best and the brightest for us, maybe the best and the brightest for some, but it's not the best and the brightest for all. And universal mean all. So that's the whole issue here today, people, as we look at this issue of healthcare. So the issue of disparities is really part of the problem. Access is an issue, sure enough. People need to have insurance. That would be an access issue. But then this issue of disparities has to come in. Because if you would take out the brown people in America, the yellow people in America, the black people in America, and sometimes even the poor white people in America, you may have to take them out too, guess then where we rank? We rank number one in the world. Meaning, this system is working for those folk that are making the policies. This system does work for the CEOs sitting at the table deciding what your deductible is going to be. This system does work when they make a decision that you're going to pay $6,000 and then $600 a month before their insurance that you bought pays for the first aspirin. This system works for them, and they have excellent outcomes. Their babies live. Their babies survive. While our babies, brown babies, black babies, yellow babies, mixed babies are dying. So if you look at infant mortality, that's the best indicator of the health of your system. We come dead last. We come dead last. And what are they attacking now? Planned Parenthood. That's what their attacks are. Planned Parenthood. Now, you can say, but I'm not talking about abortion, folk, because that's the image they would want you to think. Planned Parenthood does a whole lot more than provide counseling for abortion. They provide services. They're going to take that away. So what's going to happen to these women that's getting prenatal care and even prevention from Planned Parenthood? It goes off the wazoo. So now we've got these poor women again having babies without prenatal care, and so guess what is going to happen in infant mortality? It's going to go up. It's going to go up. So I come before you today to tell you that this is complex. There is no simple solution. But the solutions that Congressman Conyers has proposed for what, 20 years? I think every year, he has put this bill before Congress. Bill 676 before Congress. For 20 years, he has put this up, and it gets no traction. If it goes in the committee, it dies in the committee and doesn't come out. And why is that? Why is that? It's because the insurance lobby, the hospital lobby, these people with deep pockets and lots of money, don't want to see universal health. They do not want to see a single payer. Now, here's the proof that we just told you. Here's the proof. These black, brown, yellow folk ain't going nowhere. They're going to be here. This is the melting pot. And now we're getting these mixed babies. They still disenfranchised. So if the data is right there in front of you, what, why can you make these decisions that are not based on facts? What's going on here? So, folk, we need our own litmus test as we look at our elected officials, okay? We need our own litmus test. And those litmus tests is who are you going to answer to? And this is a big problem for America. And it just doesn't relate to healthcare directly. It's the whole issue of gun violence and mental health and these other issues that are low on the priority of these people that are on Wall Street that are doing very well. But we have got to start grassroots movements. We have got to start it. We've got to start organizing on a local level and making demands of our elected officials. The litmus test has to be, the litmus test has to be, do you really care about me? Do you care about me? Do you care about me? Now, there should be enough here for everybody. That's what America's supposed to be. It should be enough for everybody. The land of the brave, the land of the free. It should be enough for everybody. We get caught up in this free market issue and socialization, socialized socialism, and we get caught up in all these terms, and we use these terms to frighten people, and we marginalize other folk, and the bottom line is, there's some folks suffering. So do you care about me? And so that's the question we should ask our congressman. This gentleman cares about us. He cares about us. That's why he's been there so long, because he cares about us. Unfortunately, there are people there now that don't care about us. And we've got a very small group of folk that's running this country. We've got a very small group of folk that are making these decisions. We've got a very small group of folk that are answering to big business, big money, and that's the problem, people. We will not have equity in healthcare. We will not have babies that are living to full maturity. We will not have justice in the hospitals. We will not have insurance prescriptions that are affordable. We will not have doctors that can go into all the communities and provide the same care to everybody. We will not have that until we support Hospital 676. And what is the best example that currently exists? Medicare. And you know the story. The folk are saying, "You can't take my Medicare." Well, what is Medicare? Universal Health, single payer. That's what Medicare is. It works for the over 65. But they got us thinking that that's craziness and that's insanity. The whole premise of Obamacare was based on Medicare. And actually, Obamacare did not want to stop where he stopped. He was forced to stop where he stopped because he didn't have the buy-in from the insurance companies. And what did the insurance companies do? They raised your rates to tell you that you had to pay for these poor folk. You paying more in premiums, you got a higher deductible, because they added all these poor folk that didn't have insurance. That's not true, folk. They raised your rates because they did not want to lose profit. That's why they lost you. That's why they raised your rate. They place profit before people, and that's the whole key. And they don't intend to lose any money. They don't intend to do that. So the question becomes, should there be an industry that makes money off other people's ills? On you having an accident? On you becoming sick? Should I make money purely because you became sick? Or should I not put that money back into the system? The current system and the free market allows those insurance companies to make money and keep it in their pocket and pay their investors and marginalize your care. Now, what Obamacare didn't do, they didn't put cost constraints in place. They did not tell insurance companies, "You cannot raise deductibles." They did not tell insurance companies, "You cannot allow," or not even insurance companies, they did not allow the, they didn't tell pharmaceutical companies that you must put a cap on what you can charge. Guess what happens in Canada? You know what number 10 is on the list? Number one on that list, I told you about is Sweden. You know who's number 10 in Canada? Our neighbors in the north. They outperform us in all areas. But guess what they do differently than what we do? They, first of all, negotiate with the pharmaceutical companies. We pay for the research. We pay for the legal issues. Americans pick up the big costs of all of those, and some of that cost is unnecessary. But they blame the lawyers, saying, "Well, they're going to sue us if Morris Brown write a prescription for Invalicodin, and the patient get pancreatitis, then I got to be protected, and I'm going to need all this money to do research." So we are paying the research bills for the world. We're paying the legal bills for the world. When those companies go into Canada, France, they negotiate a price with the government. Who negotiates in America with pharmaceutical companies? Nobody. Nobody. That's why half of you are buying your drugs in Canada. So that makes sense for your pocket, but wouldn't it be even better if we would challenge a system that forces you to do that? So my message to you today, those of you that are here for being motivated for a reason, my message to you is, we've got to take this to our families. We've got to take this to our churches. We've got to take this to our community advocates, and we must all think universal care. If we had a very strong public health system, we wouldn't have people living in areas that would potentially cause poor health. If we had a, because this history of universal health would switch the burden of treating those sick to prevention. That's what, one of the advantages of universal health. They put more dollars in upfront. They find those toxic fields and don't let people build houses on those toxic fields, or they clean those toxic fields up. In Dayton, Ohio, we have a lot of toxic areas, and people are living on those areas. And these people's health are sicker because they're living in those areas. A very strong public health prevention program would identify those areas and not allow profit to dictate living situations when, in fact, it's going to be a negative consequence. Public health talks about prevention. It talks about immunizations. It talks about wellness. It even talks about nutrition. All of that is healthcare. Our current system has it backwards. We're putting more money in treating illness. We're letting people get sick, and then we're treating it. Under universal health, we would have prevention, we would put Under universal health, we would have prevention, we would put all this in place on the front end so that our babies grow up in a healthy environment. They're less likely to get asthma. They're less likely to grow up obese. They're less likely to develop COPD. You won't have commercials all over the lower socioeconomic community advertising cheap liquor and cheap cigarettes, the kind of things you don't see in the more wealthy communities. Public health will allow all of that. And we could get that under a single pair universal health system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. When Medicare was enacted in 1965, it was a fallback position. The real goal there was national health insurance for everyone. But they didn't feel that they could get that through and rather than lose the whole argument, they went with passing Medicare and Medicaid. You know, back in those days, we still cared about the poor and wanted to try and help them, so we did Medicaid. And the elderly, we respected. And so for those over 65, we passed a healthcare program because at that point, most seniors could not get health insurance. Of course, now they want, people are living longer, so the insurance companies want to make some money off of them. But have, how many of you have heard of Martin Shkreli? The CEO of Turing Pharmaceutical. He's a former hedge fund manager that bought this pharmaceutical company. He took a generic pill that was used to treat infections in people with immune disorders and raised the price on that 5,000 percent. Because he could. This is what's wrong with healthcare in America. Another CEO of Valiant Pharmaceuticals said, "We're not in business to help sick people. We are in business to make money for our shareholders." And that's what's wrong with healthcare in America. And we have got to work to return it to its moral mission. Because that has been lost. It's all greed at this point in time. We have time scheduled for questions and answers and comments from the audience. And Phil is going to take the microphone around to those that would like to ask a question. Of course, if you have a nice teacher voice like me, you might not need it. But, so...
Okay, it's on.
It's on, okay. We have a question right there.
First of all, thank you all for coming and I do appreciate the information that you've presented. I wanted to make the comment that all of the things that have been presented here would be negated if this TPP passes the Congress. So what is being done for us to organize and make sure that this Trans-Pacific Partnership doesn't get passed? Because when it gets passed, there is no chance that those issues that have been brought forth here can be brought to fruition. Now, we seem to be enamored by the fact that the president is pushing this trade agreement. But when are we going to get past the personality and deal with the policy that would negate all of what we talked about here today?
Sounds like a question for me. Brothers and sisters, we are opposed to TPP, the transportation, Pacific, trans... TPP. We are opposed to it. 100%. And there is a great number of letters coming in from organizations and citizens from around the country. And it is, it is being resisted completely. And I don't think it's going to pass. And we're going to, with forums like this and other meetings, we're going to continue this all across the country so the TPP doesn't stand a chance. It lowers the availability of good healthcare and it is not in our interest whatsoever. And I'm so glad someone raised that question. Thank you very much, sir, for doing that.
Thank you. I really appreciate everyone's presentation today. I want to be very brief here. I'm a slave and I'm not a good one. Montgomery County has the highest amounts of infant mortality. We're an incarceration state. We lock up more black people in this country than anyone. We're not taking care of that. Our parents don't go to the schools and help the teachers. That's where the issue is going to be. And it's going to take years for parents. Why aren't parents coming? Because they're out providing. By the time they get home, they don't have time to make meals. They don't have time to take care of the things they need to be doing within the home. Black violence. Go to any movie house, everything is about guns. Look at TV, any kind of thing you see advertised, it's about guns. We've got to deal with that. We've got to deal with that. Look at Hollywood. Hollywood is getting a free kind of move on that. They deal with the mafia, they deal with the CIA to make money. Healthcare is very important. I appreciate the time to be able to voice my concerns.
Hello, everyone. With the jobs bill and the program that everyone had stated about going, we've heard about "Ban the Box." What's going to transpire when these people who have felonies, when the people maybe have just spent time in Montgomery County, City of Dayton jail? What about "Ban the Box"? I understand that in Cincinnati, that "Ban the Box" is effective. But when the employer runs your rap sheet, it still shows. A friend of mine said, "Dealing with the BOP is a BLIP." Okay? And because her son was incarcerated. But be that as it may, how is this going to help them? Who can help them when they run the rap sheet and they be eradicated on the application "Ban the Box"? But the employer can still run investigative sheet on you. What do you do? And I understand it's all legal.
There are, one of the things, I teach employment and labor law, and there are places in the country where it is unlawful to discriminate on the basis of a person's record as an offender. And that means that it's not permitted to ask for that information and the information is not disclosable. Certainly, there is a need for national legislation that would make that unlawful discrimination. But what the job bill would do is provide them with jobs notwithstanding their record and provide them with the demonstrated employment record in the program that would, even if the law doesn't change, persuade some employers outside the program to provide them work. But to the extent that they didn't have those opportunities, they'd always have a good job in the program. But hopefully, we'd get legislation enacted that would make it unlawful to discriminate on that basis.
There is legislation to eliminate this provision completely. We do have the box removed, but you can still ask the question inside the, and that's still not... So we moved a little way because originally, once they see the box checked, they throw the resume away right off the bat. And that's what we've ended. But we've got to go further, as has been said.
I want to thank all the speakers. This was lovely. We talked about a lot of things that Representative Conyers is doing nationally. You can get involved in your state. The state of Ohio, we have a single payer group. It's called SPAN Ohio, Single Payer Action Network Ohio. And we have a bill that we present to the, I think in the Senate right now, 137, Neb, to expand and look into a single payer program for the state of Ohio. There are other states that are looking into this as well. Colorado, Vermont. And as a state-by-state basis, we can also look into expanding single payer in our state and eventually maybe spread that out and eventually win something like 676 nationally.
Thank you. I want to introduce you to Kathy Lambis. She is a physician here in Dayton. She and her husband work at a community health center and are very, very much involved. And sometimes when we say, "Well, I would do that, but I don't have time." We have two young physicians with very demanding jobs and young kids. And you can see Dr. NJ in the back, you know, tending to one of them. And yet they're finding the time because they want to do what's right and they want to add to it. So I thank them.
I wanted to follow up on what Dr. Brown was talking about as far as the psychology of the kind of, why there really isn't the kind of civil rights movement that there have been in the past. Particularly, the lack of a vision of an alternative to the kind of greed system we have where the 1% are kind of taking away the money that's available to everyone else. Why people are angry at people like them or people slightly lower than them on the totem pole and that's who they're angry at, particularly if they're from different races or classes. And kind of the emotional withdrawal of the poor people who don't vote as much. And then the people who vote are the people who are afraid of the poorer people taking away what they have. The 1% has more solidarity than everybody else does. What do you propose to do about that?
Very good, very good, very good. And definitely, NJ may want to help on that because we both serve with the Doctors for America. And I am a part of the other group promoting the single payer system, not as active as they are. So definitely, if either of them want to help answer that question. So the 1% basically have one interest in mind, which is to preserve their 1%. And they have no intent of sharing the 99% of the wealth that the 1% have. So it is a self-supporting group. But when you leave that group and you find, you go to the group that you're talking about, that's the group that's fighting. The blue collar folk that works are really fighting the poor people. And some of that philosophy of the 1% is to convince that blue collar person that people coming up from Mexico are going to take their jobs. That these people coming in are going to take their jobs. So this is all done really in terms, I'm not a conspiracy person. But you look at where does the data come from? You follow the money. And even racism. Racism really becomes an issue that is kind of promoted at times by those that have, and they get poor white folk thinking black folk are taking their jobs. And so there's this constant fighting among these 99% of the folk showing our differences. And as I said, I'm not a conspiracist. But if you look throughout history, what is the most uniformed group that all agree all the time? It's that 1%. And the 1% want to make sure they maintain 99%. So what's the best way to do that is to get me fighting against you. To get the poor guy with no job to fight against the guy that just got the minimum wage job. And heaven forbid, that guy coming up from South America, don't let him in the country, but he's going to take your job. So these games, and they're not games, I think these are deliberate efforts to make sure that we don't coalesce, that we don't become a unified group. What would happen, folk, if the 99% of America became unified on at least one point and decided we're going to change that one point? And I'm not going to say what that one point is. You know what? We could change it. The 99% could control that 1%. And I'm not talking about money, but we're talking about, let's say right now, if 99% of people decide we want universal health, it would happen because there are a lot of things we could do. You're talking about the civil rights movement? That was a movement that was started by a little lady, Rosa Parks. She didn't know where it was going to go, but she got sick and tired of being sick and tired. So that's probably what's going to happen now. One of you or somebody you know is going to get sick and tired of being sick and tired, paying $6,000 out-of-pocket, paying $600 every month. I'll tell you what you do. You add your out-of-pocket costs for your insurance and you compare that with how much your insurance paid this year. This is a good time to do it. Look at your out-of-pocket costs. Family of four, you paid $6,000 at least. Then you have a premium that you paid every month. Add that up. Add that to your out-of-pocket costs, add what you paid when you come see me, add what you paid when you go to the pharmacy. And then you compare what you paid versus the insurance that you purchased paid, I bet you paid the most. So is that not a point that we could all agree on, that we ain't going to take that crap no more? So how do you do that? You don't buy insurance. You shut down the insurance industry. You buy catastrophic insurance so when you go to Mammoth Valley Hospital or Ketterell Hospital, they pick up the tab. But you're going out-of-pocket pay for your little stuff that you come see me for. And you're going to challenge me when I say I need XYZ. Doc, do you really need to do that? Because I got, you know, I'm paying out-of-pocket. I would promise you, at the end of the year, your money going to look better. So NJ, I see you stood. Do you want to help me with that question?
I'm pretty loud without the microphone, but I'll use it anyway. Exactly as Dr. Brown said, this is something that, you know, we have been pitted against each other from, you know, economic classes, racial classes for centuries now. And it's something that has worked really well for the top percent of this country. But to answer the question of what we do about that, I think, you know, it goes down to two. Realizing that especially for the working poor in this country, there is no time, there is constant stressors, there's so many things that are beating against you for all of your time and all of your attention. And so, you know, doing things like the gentleman was talking about, you know, getting involved in your school with your kids is so important. But where do you find that time when you're looking for jobs all the time and you're not finding them? And all of these things come together as a very complicated, but a puzzle we can solve. So getting jobs for people that actually pay a living wage show that they have time to be involved in their kid's school, to be involved in getting healthcare, to be involved in doing all these important things in their own healthcare too, that we need to do is an important start to this. And working with groups here in the state, SPAN Ohio, obviously, I have the shirt on, big supporter of. Working with these groups is a great way to get started too because you can see people from all sorts of different backgrounds and we can all work together and we can really make a change. And you can see it, I see it, you know, every day on a local level here. Even with, you know, the ACA we were talking about before Obamacare, it's a small step, but it's a step. And we're moving in the right direction. We're getting there. As Dr. King said, "The arc of justice, or the arc of history bends towards justice." We will get there eventually. But yeah, keep getting involved, I think is the most important thing. In whatever way, whatever your passion is, that's where we got to get involved so we can make things easier for people, so then they have more time to get involved and we can keep moving forward.
And you know, I said this last night and I'll say it today. One of the things, the biggest obstacle we have towards achieving justice on any of these issues is the reluctance of people to get involved and to get up and say anything. Or even to just pick up the phone and call their representative's office and voice their opinion. And we've got to get over that. You know, we are their employers. And it's time for us to act like that employer and to hold them accountable. We also need to stand together with one another, quit fighting each other. The 1% did a wonderful job on us by pitting us against each other. But no matter what our issues are, they are all related. Whether it's the environment, whether it's jobs, whether it's the TPP, whether it's healthcare, there is a relationship with all of those issues. You know, even if it's so much as the 1% against the 99%. But we need to stand, no matter what our issue is, we need to stand together, take each other's hand and support each other in what we're doing in that. Okay? So yes, brother. And you're welcome. So yes, brother. And you need to go, right? Okay.
Thank you, Debbie. This has been a great, great event for me today and yesterday. I want to be coming back, and I also want to be inviting you to come to Detroit. Let's stand together, and a happy holiday to all of you, and thank you so very much. What an honor. Thank you.
And Congressman Conyers, you have a flight to Kansas, my understanding, right? Okay? Safe travels. Yeah. At this time, Derek Forward, the president of the NAACP here in Dayton, correct, is going to make some acknowledgements.
Thank you, thank you. You know, our congressman has to go, but there's a few things that I was going to say to our congressman. Number one, can we say, or one thing we need to do, ladies and gentlemen, is we need to call and write our legislators to support HR 1000. Can we say HR 1000? HR 1000? All right. And I want to make certain, because he has been a champion for the civil rights movement and for all Americans for over 50 years. The longest-serving congressman in these United States of America. Let's give him a hand. Over 50 years. And I want to pin, I want to pin, and the Dayton NAACP just celebrated 100 years this year. And I want you to go home knowing that you are a life member, I know that you're a life member of the NAACP, and we're going to pin you with our 100th anniversary commemorative pin. And one last thing before we leave, I want to tell you about, we fight on Capitol Hill every day. Hillary Sheldon, he's our, he's our federal, the director of our Washington Bureau, and also the senior vice president of advocacy. Conyers know him very well, and I can tell you that for almost 50 years, or ever since the inception of our federal legislative report card, Representative Conyers have received an A on our federal legislative report card. He supports every issue that the NAACP brings to Congress. Thank you, Congressman. You know, just wanted to share with you, Reverend Shepard, there's some papers up in there. Just want to share with you a few items regarding, you know, this particular session. Regarding this particular session. And I want to make certain, everything we talked about here today, the NAACP has five game changers, five national game changers. And those game changers, number one is economic sustainability. And I think we heard very well today regarding jobs, job creation, you know, and from our labor movement, you know, jobs, jobs, jobs. Economic sustainability, a chance to live the American dream for all. Every person will have equal opportunity to achieve economic success, sustainability, and security. Number two, education. And I think we heard about education today. A free, high-quality education for all. Every child will receive a free, high-quality, equitable-funded, public pre-K and pre-K through 12 education followed by diverse opportunities for accessible, affordable vocational and university education. The NAACP this next week will embark upon a national initiative. We are going to be lobbying, or actually just partnered with, the National Chamber of Commerce. That's going to be a historic moment in Washington DC next Friday and Saturday, because we want to talk about this education issue regarding our youth. And everything that our one brother was talking about, about TPP, the NAACP opposed that. And so next weekend, the NAACP and the National Chamber of Commerce will be convening for a two-day meeting to talk about that very issue. And we have organizations inside of our community like Racial Justice Now that's constantly fighting for equitable education here in our community. From a healthcare standpoint, we heard about that from Dr. Brown. The NAACP, this is another game changer for the NAACP. It says health equality for all Americans, including a healthy life and high-quality healthcare. Everyone will have equal access to affordable, high-quality healthcare and racially disparate health outcomes in the end. In my first year in office as president of the Dayton NAACP back in 2007, there was a lady by the name of Sheila Kennard, and Dr. Robert Kennard, I believe was his name. So I'm very familiar with the single payer and span, you know, because they were really driving that way back then, and I'm glad to meet somebody else who's carrying the ball forward. Public safety and criminal justice is our fourth initiative. Equitable dispensation of justice for all. Disproportionate incarceration. Racially discriminatory sentencing guidelines. Racially motivated policing strategies. And racially influenced sentencing will end, and incarceration will be greatly reduced. That's another game changer, 21st century game changer of the NAACP. We have local organizations formerly known as like the Adams Project, now Stop Mask Incarceration, that's been fighting that fight for a very long time. And our fifth and last game changer is voting rights and political representation. And that is to protect and enhance voting rights and fair representation. Every American will have free, open, equal, and protected access to the vote and fair representation at all levels of the political process. By protecting democracy, enhancing equity, and increasing demographic participation and civic engagement, African-Americans will be proportionally elected to political office. We have, as you heard earlier, a federal legislative report card that we produce every year. We're looking to do one statewide here very soon. And we're also going to be doing a state report, a local report card. Because as everybody should know, the NAACP is a nonpartisan organization. We are all about the issues. Do you support the issues of the American people? So those are the things that, those are our five game changers that will take us well into, you know, the 21st century. And once again, you know, this has been a dynamic, a dynamic town hall, and I personally want to thank Brother Logan Martinez, you know, for organizing this. Yes. Stand up and be recognized. You're back there in the corner. There you go. You know, Brother Phil Harvey, you know, for putting all this together, and their team of folks that they work with to organize this particular event. So I'm going to leave you with this. Voting is critical and essential for all of us to get what we want, to get what we need, to get what we desire, to get what it is that's not owed to us but should become a part of us, whether or not it's in healthcare, whether or not it's in jobs, whether or not it's in free trade. If we as Americans inside of this community fail to continue to go to the polls every election, not just the general election like next year, I'm talking about every single election, voter, you know, general election, special elections, primary elections, we need to be exercising our right to vote at every opportunity. People gave their lives for us to have the right to vote. So if we, if we as Americans inside of our community, Montgomery County, we can't help what happens in the rest of America, we got to take, it's an old saying, sweep around your own front door before you sweep around mine's? Well, I'm saying that we need to sweep and get our own front door clean when it comes to voting. May God bless you, may God bless the NAACP, and may God bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Make sure you give me your contact information before I leave, because we will be in touch. Okay? At this time, Tim Donlin, the president and CEO of Community Action Partnership, is going to make some closing remarks.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, wow, I lost it. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, it's a great honor for the Community Action Partnership to be part of this tremendous event today. One of the challenges that you have with being last is you're supposed to be brief. And that challenge is compounded if you're an Irishman, because we don't have a history of being brief. But I want to tell you something that I just have to tell you, because we've heard today about full employment, the lack of full employment when it could be attained. House Bill 1000 could do that. It could be in America, and it is not. And that's part of a message that we are sending to the people that live here and we're sending around the world. And I've been, I've just compelled to talk about this just very briefly. There's another message that we're sending around the world. And that message is this, that when a major American religion is vilified, and there's even the slightest suggestion that constitutional guarantees are abridged, and there's some sort of a requirement for have, to have some kind of a closing of places of worship, there's a requirement to have a registry of people because of their religion, when that kind of a condition exists in America, when there's a large amount of American citizens who are marginalized and vilified based on ethnicity, and there's even the suggestion that thousands of these folks can be deported along with their families, that they've been here for years suggesting or trying to support, when that conditions exist and with the problems that we have from within, we're sending that message along with the message, the other message is about the terrible things that have been going on since we invaded a neutral country, Iraq, which gave rise to all of this. As long as those conditions exist, America is not secure. And President John F. Kennedy said, "I do not believe that we of this generation would be willing to trade places with any other people of any other time, because in the long history of the world, very few are called upon to safeguard freedom in one of its hours of maximum danger." And all of the situations that we've heard about today, along with the world we live in today as we speak, civilization and our freedoms are at risk. We have a lot to do. And exactly as the pastor here said at the beginning, we have to be people working together. The Community Action Partnership with the Greater Dayton Area is very proud to support all of you. We need to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And Reverend Robert Jones, if you would come forward and lead us in our adjournment, and thank you.
I just wanted to thank the Community Action people for giving me a new furnace, new refrigerator, and fixed my home with the weatherization. And I've been wondering who I could thank.
You just became one of the nicest ladies I've ever met. Thank you. I can't tell you how much that means to me and all of us. We have one of our staff members. Michelle Jones is a member of our Board of Trustees. Ms. Jones, and we have some of our advisory board members too. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just want to close by adding that those of you who have on your program, the many groups that have made this possible today, and we want to say thanks to all of those. If you look at your programs, I won't take time, because I know you're rushing to get out of here, but make sure that you express thanks to all those persons who have been sponsors and helping this to happen today. Let's give them a hand. I mean, it's just been a wonderful thing that we have worked together to pull this off, and this is just the beginning. I see a hand back there. Just for a minute.
I'd like to say hello to everyone here. And my moderator here, we already met, because we're from the same area, Newark, New Jersey. That's where I was raised. That's where my wife went to college. All my kids was raised here. We have a little bit in common. Mr. Clement Price, I remember him coming up on him when I was down in Newark. And what I haven't heard so far is the city situation. I mean, with foreclosures, it's dirty. You know what I mean? I haven't had anybody address the problem of violence, that a young baby was killed over here not too long ago. How can we not be fed up? But I don't hear any, you know, I don't hear anything from anybody about this situation. As you notice, a young man was killed in Chicago, Illinois. All across this country, even in our own city here, we've had problems. And I haven't heard anybody really, really address it to the magnitude that, what are we going to do? Mr. Crawford out here, Mr. Price, all these gentlemen, it seemed like it just kind of went away. You know what I mean? We have to start, this is a problem, a part of the healthcare problem too. If we start with these young people, letting these young people talk, us older guys talking to these young people. And I always had in my mind, a group of older men going into these communities where they don't have fathers and talking to these young men to let them know, because a lot of them simply don't know. And we're putting the blame on them. But I think that's a disease itself, because it leads from being, not having whatever, you know, stressed, because I have kids, and they have been stressed out. But luckily, they have a father. I have a son that's in Nashville, graduated Tennessee State. Now he graduated Vanderbilt. I got a daughter graduated Clark State. But if it wasn't for him, my wife, and myself, you know, doing those stressful, very stressful. You see what I'm saying? And I would like to also see, a lot of y'all, I don't see you, I live up the street up here on Fairview, and I walk down here, I walk, I'll be 66 next month, and I walk. But I don't see a lot of these individuals in the community that's trash. I mean, there's bushes laying on the sidewalk. You know what I mean? I don't see, I don't see y'all.
Yeah, we thank you.
We got to come together as one, not at a meeting. You see what I'm saying? Because a lot, I feel, I feel like, right now, I don't know you. I want to get to know you, but I won't see you again unless there's another meeting. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, thank you. This was a town meeting, so we try our best to give you, you want to respond?
I just want to say that we appreciate the gentleman's comments. You know, this actually was not the forum for that particular topic that you're referring to. Right. Understood. You know, but there is like a Dante Price case, I think you mentioned that. The SCLC scored a big victory in that Dante Price case, got the individuals convicted and sent to prison. The John Crawford case, the NAACP, you know, still working on that particular case. So there's various organizations that's doing a lot of different things, and we would encourage the participation of individuals who are on the sidelines or in the bleachers or in the stands. We would encourage those individuals to get a part of the game and get on the team.
That's what we want to do.
Young man, I know you're in a head of an ovale. You guys need to listen to older guys.
All right. Yeah, listen to the old guys, because I'm one of the old ones, so.
Can I say something for a second?
One closing.
Yes. I really appreciate your comments, because I think that part of the format of having a town hall meeting is to have a community discussion. And you're absolutely right. The violence in our community and across our country is really, and our organization has worked on a number, and has worked with a number of people on that on an ongoing basis, and we're going to do more. But it has to be on the agenda. And we're going to have more of these meetings, and we want to invite people, and especially young people, we want to listen to us old guys too, but we got to listen to young people as well. And so our group is going to work and network with everybody here and in Columbus and around the state to put forth an ongoing dialogue, because there's a direct relationship to jobs, violence, and crime, and we are into dealing with it.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's give them a hand for bringing that issue to us that we need to deal with. Would you stand, if we stand and prepare for closing? And I'm going to ask Reverend Jerome if he would come forward and do a brief kind of closing prayer, and also...
And also, we want to give him a hand for what he's been doing to work around these same issues of problems in our community. You come forward and close us with a prayer and maybe take a word about what we about.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We certainly extend greetings from the National Office of the Stop Mass Incarceration Network, co-founded by Carl Dicks and Dr. Cornel West, where we work as the national faith and social justice advocate. And we've been all around this country, from Chicago to Baltimore to Cleveland even, and dealing with these same kinds of issues. And so now is the time to get busy, and we must do it together. It's the only way we can do it. We've been bringing each other down for years, and so now it's time that we come together and move in the same direction. That's what it's all about. Our Father and our God, as we stretch our hands and hearts to you, we thank you for this opportunity of gathering together. We thank you for an elected official like Congressman Conyers, who has made a decision some years ago to stay on the battlefield no matter how long it took. We ask that you continue to strengthen him and to be with him. We thank you for this facility whose doors are open and for the leader that you have placed here to see to it that the challenges of our day are met. We are grateful for all of these community members, these advocates and activists and others who have come together with one thing on their mind, and that is economic, social, political justice for all of your people. We thank you for allowing it, we praise you for it, in your name we pray. And instead of saying amen, one thing we do is we have people look at each other. Turn to your neighbor real quick. Look at the person closest to you. Shame on you if you're next to somebody you don't like, it's going to show in your eyeballs. Look them straight in the eyeball. I want to leave you with this. Ask them the question, if every member, ask them if every member of this community was a member just like me, what kind of community might this community be? Think about it on your way home. God bless you.